Good evening and welcome to the Monday, July 9 Council Committee Work Session. Councilmember Winterstein is excused and Council Deputy President Baptiste is expected shortly. We'll get started with ID 0299, Citywide Strategic Plan. Further conversation with David Fujimoto and our consultant, Brian.
Thank you.
And for City Administrator Moon.
Thank you very much. Just a quick comment before we get started. I'm happy to have both David and Brian here to present this item. The quick comment that I'd like to make is just remind council members that our hope is to get some direction so we can move forward with the next phase of this project, which these two gentlemen will relay. But also to gently remind you that this is not the development of a comprehensive plan. This is development of strategic priorities for the next three to five years for the city. And we hope that we can be focused in that effort so that we will provide a framework for decision-making going forward and have some clarity on key priorities for the city. It's not meant to encompass all that we do or all that's important to us or all the values that we hold. Our mission and vision statement should be that bigger, broader picture. And the strategic plan priorities, goals, and action items that we will create will be more focused. So with that, happy to have David and Brian present.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Brian Scott. I'm with BDS Planning and Urban Design, a consultant on the strategic planning process. Nice to be with you here again this week. We were together a couple of weeks ago and we discussed the strategic priorities. And after a robust discussion, decided we had to take a little time to reflect on what you said and bring you back some choices to see if we could get to a decision. So that's where we are today. We want to discuss strategic priorities, goal statements, and the elements of those options. And the objective for this agenda item is to approve the strategic priorities. As Emily mentioned, a strategic plan is not the comprehensive plan. It is a focus on where are the places that the city needs to make change now. So we're identifying strategic priorities, which are areas where we need to change where things are happening. And the immediate response to your decision tonight about the strategic priorities is we're going to identify a work group to work in each of those strategic priority areas. So there's an immediate consequence to your decision tonight. Quick review, same slides I used last time. The components of a strategic plan begins with what we call some foundational documents, a vision, a mission, and guiding principles for the organization that are enduring and last a long time and cover everything the city does. And then in a strategic plan, we identify a number of strategic priorities, each of which has a goal or perhaps two. And then each goal has a series of objectives and actions and targets of what you're going to try and measure and where you're going to try and get with those targets. So that's basically the structure of a strategic plan. So the strategic priorities are places where you want to make change during the life of the strategic plan. At your last meeting, we agreed, got your feedback and agreed on where we were on the vision, mission, and guiding principles. Tonight, we want to refine the strategic priorities and make a decision about exactly what those are. So that's the goal for this conversation. So recap on the process. The strategic planning process has three parts. The first part is identifying who we are and what's important to us now. The second part is where do we want to go? And the final part is how are we going to get there? Where we are right now is right at the end of the who we are phase. We added an extra council meeting here to be here tonight to make this decision. Soon as we make that decision, we're moving into the where do we want to go set with a series of work groups to work in each of the strategic priority areas. As you remember, we've done quite a lot of community input. We had, we did a citywide survey, lots of outreach to the community. We had a strategic plan charrette where about 80 people came together and debated the results of that citywide outreach and identified some priority areas that we grouped into growth and development, mobility, infrastructure, environmental stewardship, and city leadership and services. And then we came to you at your last meeting with identifying those areas as potential draft strategic priorities. They were growth and development, mobility, infrastructure, environmental stewardship, city leadership, and services. You had a robust discussion about that last time. I think you were pretty close to comfortable with it, but you were having, growth and development was kind of growing into a bigger and bigger topic as the conversation went on. And I think you had some concerns that it didn't quite encompass everything that you thought it should. So you asked us to come back and give you some options about how to address this, and that's what we're doing. So as presented at your last meeting, we had some draft goal statements for each of these priorities. And I think you were comfortable with some, we made some modest revisions per your feedback on mobility, infrastructure, environmental stewardship, and city leadership and services. But the place that we got kind of stuck was on growth and development, which in your last meeting, we presented as proactively manage the type, character, and pattern of development, addressing affordability and providing services for new and existing residents. And parts of that included the character of development, density in the right places, diverse housing alternatives, affordable and inclusive, community engagement, social services. At the same time, we're doing growth and development. And you kind of were having trouble seeing that as all one bucket, I think was the challenge in that conversation. So in response to that, we went back and gave it some thought and we worked with the city staff to try and refine that. And want to give you two choices tonight, I think either of which we could work with going forward. One would be to take the same five strategic priorities as reworded by you last time with growth and development, mobility, core infrastructure, environmental stewardship, city leadership, and services, but break growth and community development into two goals, one about the built environment and another goal about social and economic environment, sort of breaking those two pieces apart. The other option would be to make a sixth strategic priority, but making a similar break between things with the first one being growth and development, the second one we're calling human economy, just a little different than maybe economic development, but a place to include everything that is economic development, but recognize the human factor in that as well as the other four. So I want to walk through what the sort of, how that would roll out if we went, did each of those options. So for the first option, when we have a strategic priority of growth and development, it would have two goals, one about the built environment, one about social and economic environment. A working statement for the work group to chew on for the first goal would be proactively manage the type, character, and pattern of development to grow in a manner consistent with our vision and principles. The second one on social and economic environment would be foster a stable and robust economy supported by diverse business opportunities, affordable housing, and services for new and existing residents. As I said last time, these aren't final goal statements, but they're sort of what we give the work group to start working on, and we give them license to suggest some modifications. If we went further with that than breaking down the parts of each of those, we would include development character in different parts of the city, including historic preservation, density, and diverse housing would go into the first goal about the built environment. Diverse business opportunities, affordable and inclusive, community health, social services, and cultural opportunities would go into the second one under social and economic environment. Option two would be to go to six goals. Again, the final four are the same in both options. The first one would have a goal about growth and development, proactively manage the type, character, and pattern of development to grow in a manner consistent with our vision and principles. That's the same. The human economy would foster a stable and robust economy supported by diverse business opportunities, affordable housing, and services for new and existing residents. Pretty much the same concept in both of these, but whether we want to show it as an additional priority or breakdown on two goals within one priority. Fleshing out option two a little further, the growth and development goal would again have the character, density, and housing, while the human economy would have business opportunities, affordable and inclusive, community health, social services, and cultural opportunities as pieces of that. In each case, then we'd have mobility, which is where we'd pick up multimodal transit, bike and pedestrian access, regional approach and partnerships, aligning land use and mobility goals, and investing in creative and diverse infrastructure and solutions. Core infrastructure would include critical facilities, capital investments, adaptable and opportunistic design, place making, connectivity, and resiliency. Environmental stewardship would include long-term planning and vision, preservation enhancement of the natural environment, parks, environmental programs and trails, open space, community ownership and buy-in. And then city leadership and services would include the purpose and mission, fiscal discipline, building trust, community engagement, diversity and leadership, equity, and safety. So those would be the same either way. So the question would be these two different structures that I put before you for your discussion and hopefully resolution tonight. One has five strategic priorities. One of those has two goals under it. The other one would have six strategic priorities. The practical difference between these two is the one on the left has five work groups and the one on the right has six work groups. But pretty much they're working on the same material. So what do you think?
Well, would people like to, without making necessarily a decision right this moment, but mulling over the options in front of us? Anybody? Councilmember Ray?
I just have a couple of thoughts. One is, I don't know what human economy is. It seems, it's not a term that resonates with me. So for that very reason, if I was to go with six goals, I would call the second goal social and economic environment and, you know, just carry that, or I'm sorry, priority, carry that goal over into the priority thing. I know what that means. The other thing that I'm really struck with when I look at this is I think we put safety under city leadership and services, and we put social services under community development and growth. And I don't know where they belong, but they belong together because they both are things that are driven by our growth. So we can't say, you know, here's public safety happening over here in a vacuum. It's happening as, you know, we have to keep up with growth in the built environment. So like I said, I don't really care where they go. I just think they need to go together. They're like that.
Got it. Thoughts?
My initial reaction was the built environment. I think that's the correct terminology for what we are talking about. That's what it's referred to in urban planning, and I think that it means something in the science of urban planning. There's the College of Built Environments at UW, for example, and I think that's the right word. So I like that. I agree with Councilmember Ray about human economy. To me, that doesn't resonate, and I think it doesn't convey, it doesn't convey that we want a social and economically vibrant environment. And for that reason, I support also the social and economic environment wording. And I think I, overall, my initial response was that I am in support of option one because I see the need from the community to have the built environment grow with, within the character of the, to preserve the character and have deliberate character. And then I also see the need for social services to grow at that same rate. And so to me, having them dovetail in this way makes a lot of sense.
All right. Other comments? Member Baptiste?
So thank you for the additional work here. This is great to get to review this. The, I tend to like the second option because I think that we do need to call out the economic environment. The social and economic environment, I do, I like that wording better, and that tends to make more sense to me than the human economy. So that's just kind of what, those are just my thoughts right now, and I'll probably have more, but just the human economy wasn't, I was just a little bit stuck on that. But I would be supportive of social and economic environment.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yes, I like separating it into six, but yeah, human economy doesn't work for me either. But social and economic environment, kind of, I know that's not quite bringing my chimes either. And I keep thinking of the word vitality, I mean, maybe because I was on the Economic Vitality Commission, and thinking that economic vitality is what we really want, right? We want it to be vital. And when they read down the words, say, stable and robust, and I'm not sure how to be both those at the same time. So to me, there, so I want something that has vitality to it in, and I want to say in that economic sense, kind of leading with that, because if we don't have that, there's a whole different things that change. And then the social side as well, some vitality into that. So that's where I'm kind of leaning, word-wise versus environment, which, and it doesn't get me there either. So you were going to say something?
There's the one thing I wanted to point out. The elements that we were trying to group under this, and I'm not trying to defend the wording of the title, but we were, it was business opportunities and including affordable and inclusive, community health, social services, and cultural opportunities. So it was more broad than just economic development. So that's why we were trying to say something beyond economic vitality, because I thought it might, that might, I was trying to say something that kind of made people think a little further than that. That was my rationale, but.
And right, and I wasn't saying just those words, because you dealt with both of them on the social side as well. So I'm saying we want economic vitality as well as a social vitality. I'm just trying to give a life, you know, a little more life to that word.
So you're thinking economic and social vitality? I see. Okay.
See what I'm saying? Because I'm just kind of stuck on, and then, because we get down here, like I say, you get to stable, foster stable and robust. And I kind of feel I'm torn between those two, although I think, I know what you're trying to say, but at the same time, they're a little bit contradictory.
So I do want to call your attention. We distributed to the council members an email ahead of time. Though Councilmember Winterstein couldn't be here tonight, he wanted to share his thoughts with us. So you've got that in front of you as well. He does recommend having, basically, his argument is economics being its own, sorry, its own priority. So I'll just mention that, and you can take a look at that as we're talking. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Can you go back one slide, just we were looking at the two options?
Back to the options slide.
Yeah, thank you. I do like the built environment as a heading, and if necessary, moving the social and economic, whatever that ends up to be, in place of human economy. I think my bigger concern still is about what Emily spoke to when she first opened, had the opening remarks, I think, at the meeting tonight. And that is, I'm concerned, I'll say it more directly, I'm concerned we're trying to do too much, that we're trying to get things in here that are important, but not necessarily, do not necessarily need to be a strategic focus over the next three to five years. And I think that's part of the reason that we're having trouble trying to find priority titles with things fitting underneath them is because we're trying to fit in too many things in this list.
Sorry, was it priorities for the next three to five or thirty-five?
Three to five.
Chris, looks like you had another.
Yeah, I just, I was, I'm going to pick up on where Councilmember Goodman was going. And so we have lots of really good goals here. And so one of the questions that we're going to have to wrestle is how do you deal with when goals are in conflict with each other? And I know that's a lot of our job, is to figure out how to deal with jobs in conflict. But if we see everything we're putting up here as a number one priority, then nothing is a priority. So I just think we have to be cognizant of the decisions we're making here and the fact that this stuff is by nature going to conflict with itself. And we have to be prepared and have a mechanism to work through those, what I believe are inevitable conflicts.
So I feel like we're talking about, there are three sort of issues in front of us right now, right? One is, do you have five priorities or six? The second issue is what do you call the first priority under option one or the first two priorities under option two? And then there's a third thing that you brought up that I want to come back to, which is this issue of services and where you put services. I'm generally in favor of having six, option two, because I think that, I'm not sure why, but I think that the conversation with the community thus far hasn't included enough about the economic health of the city and the fact that some of the challenges we face with traffic and funding of the city can be tied back to our economic health and, you know, where, whether we get, whether we get living wage jobs in the city. And so I look at those first two, and I think growth and development is, you know, how are we going to manage the growth that's coming that is ongoing? And the, whether it's human economy or social and economic development or economic and social vitality, which I like, I think that that's, that's the thing right now, even if not one more person moved to the city of Issaquah, right? We would still have this issue of wanting to see the economic vitality. And that's why, to me, it rises to a top level, because it's sort of different than those growth and development issues. But I think the other thing you talked about, which is where you put services, social services, and then some of the services that I think are under city leadership and services. I think that's an important topic because I, in my mind, that sort of naturally to me falls under the growth and development side of things as we see the changes that are going to be coming to the city. But I'm also open to influence on that. The thing that I most wanted to see is a greater emphasis on the economic vitality in the city, because I think that's going to be essential to a lot of the other stuff we want to accomplish. Councilmember Goodman?
Thanks. So when you're talking about economic vitality, economic environment, going back to, again, what Emily said, you know, it's always important. We've had changes going on for several years that are big changes in Issaquah, but economic, the robust, stable, vital, you know, vital, all of that stuff about the economy here locally is all very important. So I think just a broad term about economic vitality doesn't mean anything. And I don't know what the work groups do, but to me, the important thing about the economic vitality is the growth that we've had over the last few years is bringing us a lot of residential units, not any jobs. So that is not the same as we need a vital economy. That is, if there is a, you know, and even Paul mentioned it in his comments, the no net loss of jobs, we need to gain jobs. So I think we need to have a more laser-sharp focus on what it is we're trying to accomplish in the next three to five years regarding our economic vitality, our economic environment, and not just have something broadly said.
Do you have a suggestion how we phrase that today?
No, I don't know that I have to come up with the phrases, but I think we're taught, so.
We have to come up today with what we want to recommend going forward, right?
Yeah, but I don't have to, well, I think what we heard Brian say is we don't have to come up with a specific phrases. It's, these are, this is what we go forward with in terms of what the groups work, what the groups work on. So I think if we, if we were to, as a group, pass along the notion that we are more interested in a laser focus on jobs, then I think we can pass along that idea. But I don't, I mean, I don't know where it would go. Maybe it would be, maybe it is under growth, the built environment or growth in community development, and that we, that we capture the idea that so far, for example, in the central Issaquah area, we're not getting what we wanted in jobs. And that needs to be a focus for the next three to five years. And how they manage to capture that in this list of priorities in terms of words, I don't.
So I'm totally with you. I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit as to whether we have to figure out the specific language of the priorities today, and you're saying, no, we don't, that you can take what you hear from us today and.
Yeah, what we need is categories to organize the next section, and that's what the work groups will do, is we'll say, these are the things we want you to work on, and they'll do their work and come back and propose some language. And there will be time for wordsmithing the goals later, but.
Okay.
So it seems to me, if I had to say, like, right now, I had to say, what have I heard? I'm hearing probably we've got six priority areas. One of them is called the built environment, and it has the things that we listed under growth and development. And one of them is called economic and social vitality with a note that we need to make sure we're talking about creating jobs in that category. Is that capturing sort of what I feel like I've heard from all of you together?
Councilmember Hunt?
One thought about splitting them out, which you mentioned that there are going to be different work groups. So one consequence of this is that also we'll have different work groups if we split them out. And I was struck by, looking at this list, this list in a lot of ways looks a lot like our commissions, which I'm sure is not a surprise. But I think that, I think that one potential benefit of considering them together would be that there would be a group that was looking at them together. As Councilmember Ray pointed out, there may be potential conflicts or trade-offs. And often, looking at things individually, as a former commissioner, I always felt that I benefited from working with the other commissioners, seeing how they were working. And so potentially having work groups on issues that are related, having work groups work together, I think there's, there's benefit to that. So I wanted to point that out, because it's one possible consequence of the decision we make when we split them out.
Thank you. Councilmember, sorry, Deputy Council President Baptiste?
So I just wanted to echo some of the thoughts that Councilmember Goodman had talked about. When we're talking about what we want to do in terms of economic vitality, even some of the language, the bullet points that we have underneath that talk about business opportunities. And I do think that we want to boil things down and be more laser-focused, to use your word, Stacy, on where, what we want to do and where we want to head. And Councilmember Winterstein had brought up the no net loss of jobs or the commercial square footage in the central area. So being able to concentrate on jobs, being able to concentrate on what that commercial square footage, I think we want to be more specific than business opportunities.
Other, Councilmember Ray?
I just want, I think, Brian, I think this, you'll agree with me. From all the strategic planning I've done in the past, the goals and priorities are directional in nature. Where the real magic occurs is when we start to break down into objectives and we start talking about the outcomes we're trying to get to. So when we talk through this notion of laser focus, we're not there yet. I think that that's, that's down the road just a little piece.
Yes.
I just wanted some clarity there. So I'm okay with the ambiguity that we're dealing with here, because I know that we're, in the next step, we're going to start to refine and refine and refine this into something that's more actionable.
Deputy Council President Baptiste?
Thank you. So I, and my point in talking about that is just to make sure that we have an overarching goal, that we're, definitely, we can get down into the laser focus later, but that we do break that out and have an overarching goal that talks about our economy.
Councilmember Ray?
I thought we did. Do we not?
I think we do.
Okay, good.
You know, if it wasn't gimmicky, I would want to give everyone on that one commission a little, a little pocket laser, just because I love the idea of a laser focus on jobs, but I realize that would not be appropriate still. I have the image in my head. Other thoughts? Councilmember Hunt?
I, I think that we still need somewhere in here to have arts and performing arts. And I know that this is not meant to encompass everything we do, but again, I think that it's an important part of our identity. We're talking about the things we want to preserve in addition to the ways in which we want to change. And so I still think it needs to find a home.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Councilmember Goodman?
Yeah, I, I just want to respectfully disagree, because I don't think, I haven't read it in any of the comments that I can recall or heard it in the charrette. Again, it's super important. It is an identity. I don't see it as something that we want to pull, pull out as a special focus over the next. I don't see it as something that we want to pull out as a special focus over the next three to five years.
Deputy Council President Patisse?
So I'm just sort of, I have a thought about core infrastructure, so I'm just going to throw it out there, and then would love to hear what other council members have to say. I'm wondering, because I'm also thinking about having our mission be too broad. We've got so many different things, and being able to boil it down, and I'm wondering if core infrastructure could be put underneath city leadership and services, as the infrastructure being a service that the city is offering, and then having specifics underneath that.
And I think there was a conversation to that effect last time we met, as to, I'm not sure if you had made that thought, or somebody else had, but, Councilmember Hunt?
I had made a different but similar suggestion regarding infrastructure, which now became core infrastructure. I think my understanding, and I think having it separate is okay. My understanding is that it does stand apart. As Council President Martz pointed out, even if we don't have any population growth, we still need to have that core infrastructure. It stands alone, and it's an important thing to maintain. So that's sort of where the conversation went last time, because I had a different way to put it under a different category, but it didn't apply.
Deputy Council President Patisse?
And so from sitting in the charrette and talking about this, we talked a lot about infrastructure and making sure that we have the funding for projects into the future, and not letting that be forgotten, making sure that that's budgeted for. So there were some critical pieces that seemed to come out in the charrette, and so I wouldn't want to lose those at all, but would want to make sure that was pointed out, if that was put in a different section.
The pieces that came out of the charrette would be critical facilities, capital investments, design, place-making, connectivity to neighborhoods, and resiliency were things that were key elements there. And I think the, I think the thinking in that being a strategic priority is that Issaquah's growing, has grown a lot, and infrastructure's a priority and needs to be kept at the forefront, even though it's not always the thing that the citizens show up talking about, but it's really core to what the city does.
Anybody else have any thoughts on whether that should be merged in with, in some sense, with city leadership and services? Because I feel like we sort of heard one in favor and sort of one against.
I would, I would be fine with putting it under city leadership and services. I just, I think, based on the last conversation, it sounded like we need to make sure that it is emphasized in some way, if it's a bullet under city leadership and services. Personally, I'm okay with that, but I don't know how the other council members feel.
Councilmember Ray?
I don't think it belongs there. And if you look at the other things that are under city leadership and services, they're kind of, they're birds of a different feather, and so it grinds a little bit to me. So it's not a smooth alignment. So, and I think it is a very important thing, and something that, as Brian said, it's not something that people get really excited about, you know, our sewers and everything. But I think as good stewards of the sewers, iteration, we have an obligation to keep that focus there. So I actually prefer it having its own spot in the sun.
Councilmember Ramos?
Just so you know, there's more numbers here, I agree with you. It needs to be separate as it is now. It needs to, from my standpoint.
As Chair of Infrastructure, I am shocked to hear that you believe that infrastructure is its own high-level priority within the city.
There you go.
Councilmember Goodman, thoughts?
I think it needs to be separate. I think you put it under city leadership and services, I do believe that they are birds of a different feather, looking at the list. And then I also think that then you have a city leadership and services that includes core infrastructure, and then you just have this really long, it becomes just a long list of stuff that can be easily broken out.
So I think if, if I can sum up what I'm hearing, is I think there's, there was suggested the potential interest to merge the two together, but there isn't consensus, a strong consensus in the council. And I would sort of suggest, unless anybody vehemently disagrees, that we sort of, in this particular case, because there isn't a strong consensus, we defer to how the charrette organized this, and on that particular thing, leave them as separate items. Not seeing anybody disagree. Councilmember Goodman?
I guess I would, I would take it up a little bit higher, and I would defer to the consultants to maybe make a recommendation, rather than just the charrette, because we have had more feedback than just the charrette.
Deputy Council President Patisse?
Thank you for all the feedback. I am really happy to leave that. Infrastructure is incredibly important, so I'm happy to leave that. There was a suggestion, just to sort of boil things down, but now that we've talked that through, I think it should stay where it is.
All right.
So, did we get to a decision on five or six? I think, I think I heard six, with built environment being the first one, and social and economic vitality being the second one, and some input on the subheadings there. And, you know, as we get further, the titles could evolve a little bit. We're not making a final decision, but basically, we're going to appoint six work groups as the decision we're making right now.
I think the second one should come up with a five-letter acronym that spells out laser. Sorry, I should, a six-letter acronym.
So I think we have a decision. Do we, Emily, do we need to vote on this?
We can't actually vote on it.
All right. So then, the next steps is the work groups on strategic priorities convene very soon, and then we'll have community vetting of the goals and the objectives they develop, and we'll be back to you in the fall with draft goals and objectives for this. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Quick question before I let you go. Are these goals different than the goals we just did?
The, no. The work groups will, now they've got a category, and they've got a draft goal statement, and they will work on developing objectives and actions and measures, but we'll come back to you with the objectives. They might reword the goals in that process, and so we'll come back with final. So I don't, I'm not taking the wording in the goals as final at the moment.
Thank you.
And I'll ask, before we move on to the next topic of the evening, because is that, if any members of the public wish to give us their thoughts on this this evening? Mr. Kapler, as he moves towards the microphone?
How do we measure economic vitality? If our housing prices go up faster than the region, or our lease rates go faster than the region, is that economic vitality? That's a hard one to define. To me, infrastructure and services go together. If you have great pipes in the ground, or great roads, you don't have a police, and you don't have the people from Public Works operation fixing them when they need fixing, or whatever, those tie, are tied together. I just see, city leadership is worthwhile to have as a separate topic, and those were all good things that were listed under it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. And with that, we can move on. The second item that we have this evening is ID 0276, Water System Plan. This is part two of our three-part epic journey into providing water for our citizens. Robert York, Engineering Manager, and Jeff Hanson, Consultant.
Let's get this thing... Do you want to keep this up on... Good evening, council members. We're here for the second of three scheduled workshops to consider the policy issues surrounding the adoption of the 2018 Water System Plan. At this workshop, we start with a recap of the previous workshop, and I have Jeff Hanson again here tonight from HDR to provide a presentation on our behalf. And then we'll talk about the second policy issue, which is supply options. The good news about supply options is we have virtually just two supplies, and how we use those supplies is what we'll talk about tonight. Before Jeff begins, I'll just want to give you a brief update on the other activities going on. And we have sent the Water System Plan out to all the outside, a number of outside agencies, King County, Cascade Water Alliance, the Department of Health, the adjacent purveyors. We're beginning to receive feedback from some of those entities, and I'm in the process of beginning to remind the other entities that we'd like their feedback, hopefully by the end of July. And getting that feedback, along with the considerations that you're going to debate and discuss tonight, well, we aim to finalize the Water System Plan in the fall of 2018. So without further delay, here's Jeff to give you the update on tonight's workshop.
Jeff? All right. As Bob mentioned, there's two parts to the discussion tonight. First, we will recap what we talked about last time, hit the highlights. There were some questions that were posed, and I want to come back and answer those questions. And then we'll move on into, as Bob said, policy issue two, the supply options. Okay? So to kick off, again, a couple weeks ago, we were discussing conservation. And just to recap, a reminder that you, as a city, as a water provider, have a formal water use efficiency goal. You've previously adopted Cascade's regional goal as your formal goal, as all members of Cascade do. And we're proposing that that happen again in this current Water System Plan update. A reminder that Cascade will be updating that regional goal starting next year. We've then gone beyond that to discuss informal targets that are specific to the city, and those reflect continued conservation savings from implementation of your existing conservation program. You'll remember some of the numbers. We talked about reductions in per-unit water usage, 5% for single-family, 2% for multifamily, and commercial. We had a lot of discussion about that last time. And the bottom line here is that presently, that is the continued plan moving forward with those targets. Reminder that with that, with those conservation targets in mind, that results in a demand forecast range, a range of potential futures. And we have what we call our baseline planning forecast, which is the high, or the conservative one, and then conservation's at the lower end. Question was posed last time about what is the probability of either of those demand forecasts occurring? We haven't done what I would call a detailed probabilistic demand forecast, but what I can say is, there's a much higher likelihood of the lower demand forecast occurring, because that's the one that's assuming continued conservation savings, and you're implementing those conservation measures. So to answer that question, we would, we would view the lower forecast as being the more probable, but for supply planning purposes, we also want to take a look at that higher one. To remind you, this is what those demand forecast ranges look like. This is the forecast of average day demand for the entire city, in terms of millions of gallons per day. You've seen this slide before. The baseline forecast is the high, solid line, the conservation one is the dashed one beneath it. The one addition, from what you saw two weeks ago, the green dot represents 2017 actual. When we built this demand forecast, this work was done last year, before we had 2017 totals. We've now added that so we can see how things are aligning with the projection. Bottom line, in terms of average day demand, that 2017 actual is right in alignment with what we projected the demand forecast would look like, on an average day demand basis. As a reminder, this is the maximum day demand projection. And there you see the 2017 actual is actually lower than what the forecast was calling for. This was just a reflection of last year, peak day water usage wasn't as high as it has been in the past, in terms of a ratio against average day demand. So this is just kind of context and reference. We had a lot of discussion last time about the dynamic between more aggressive water conservation and the potential impact that could have on your water rates. You may remember I said that with more aggressive conservation and knocking down high-end water use, you need to make up that revenue somehow, and that can have an impact on the rates for even lower water users. I wanted to just touch on that, because there were some questions about that from council. To illustrate this, we've developed a hypothetical example, okay? I want to walk through this real quick, not get mired too much in the weeds. But in this example, let's assume that the city only has two water customers, all right? There are two homes that use water. Customer one uses a significant amount of water, 6,500 cubic feet, or CCF. By contrast, customer two uses a much lower amount of water, 8 CCF. We're talking about blocks. With your water rate structure, it's designed based on an inclining block, which means that the more a person uses, the more they pay on a per-unit basis, okay? And you'll see here in this chart, approximate rates for the city in those five, in those five blocks, okay? So customer one uses enough water that they are over here into block five, okay? So they're irrigating a lot in the middle of the summer. Customer two, using a smaller amount of water, is only into block two. If the city were to implement more aggressive conservation than what you do now, and then what you plan to do into the future, we discussed last time that a lot of that additional conservation would be targeted at single-family irrigation, in trying to reduce that amount. If we assume that is done, and that would result in customer one reducing their water use in the high block, right? Let's say they reduce their usage by 20%. The city would be losing that amount of revenue associated with that water usage, and how do we make that up? We've adjusted the rate structure to account for that, so the rates in every block go up, okay? And that's what the chart is showing. Bottom-line result is that that 18% reduction in overall water usage, okay, would result in a 44% increase in rates, okay, across the board. Purely hypothetical, don't take those numbers and run with them and say that's what would happen in the city. But we wanted to simply illustrate that, this is the dynamic relationship between decreasing the amount of water used on the high end, and that impact that it could have on rates across the board. You really need to do a detailed rate structure to dive into it, but I just wanted to provide an example, because that was discussed a lot.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I think this is interesting. I think also, I serve on the Cascade Water Alliance, and we talk about that there is, we are in an area with a lot of rain, and there's water availability, also, infrastructure is a set cost. At the same time, I think the bottom line, and maybe you can confirm if this is correct, but it is, conservation is important, water is a limited natural resource ultimately. And so I think when we look at this, and we look at that it's not necessarily saving money to reduce past a certain rate, that may be the case. At the same time, conservation of water is still important. So I just wanted to clarify that and make sure that that's all correct.
Yes, I would concur, and I know we all would concur with that. This was a very focused example, just looking at that financial relationship with conservation. Point is very well taken. Water is a limited resource, even though we are on the west side of the Cascades, that supply is not unlimited in the summer. Conservation is important, for sure. That's all I was going to say on what we talked about last time, unless there were any other questions on the topic of conservation.
Other questions? Councilmember Ray?
Just a clarification. Go back to, if you wouldn't mind. One more, here we go.
Here?
Yeah, so the average daily demand, is that per household, per dwelling unit, per person?
This is total for the city, because this is in millions of gallons per day, so just over 2.5...
So it does reflect the growth in the population of the city?
Well, it does. I mean, it reflects, this was, that 2017 number is the total usage by all residents and businesses in the city, averaged over the course of the year. So it does reflect, it does reflect growth that you've seen.
It doesn't reflect the conservation that we've seen in those years, I guess is where I'm going, going to, in that although we are seeing an escalating total consumption, we've also seen a escalating total population. And I guess what I was curious about, mostly just curious, is do we see the consumption of water per household flat, declining, or increasing?
Okay. To answer that, the answer is... To answer that, the answer is it has been decreasing. I don't have the slide here, but we discussed that two weeks ago, and so there's information in that prior packet that does show that historical trend. Yes, to get at that point, per-unit consumption has been going down. And that's why we talk about that dash line represents that continuing with continued decrease, because we would expect that to happen.
So I actually have a question. Is it possible that there's a floor to what you would see as the per capita water consumption? Because people are going to drink a certain amount of water.
Right.
They're going to use a certain amount of water for cooking. They're going to use a certain amount of water. I mean, once you get down to a low-flush toilet, people are not going to stop going to the bathroom unless prices get really, really high.
That's right.
And so do you see some, some resistance to, you know, market stiffening to further, to further, what's the word I'm looking for? Conservation?
Yeah. And that's kind of what we were speaking to last time in terms of the, you get to a point of diminishing returns, if you will, in terms of the level of effort you put into conservation, the savings you get. To put a, to put a number to it, I don't have that silver bullet number for you, but a quick approximation. We talked about last time, your single-family per-unit water usage, and I don't have the number in front of me, on the order of 125, I think is what we had said, 145, I'm sorry, 145 gallons per day for a single-family home. And remember, we were comparing that with others in the region, and we were showing that you were on the lower end already. And, you know, I do water system planning for other communities up and down the I-5 corridor down in Oregon. And, you know, I rarely, rarely see numbers that would get below 140 gallons per day per home. Now, could you push it a little bit more? Probably. But these are, there are some communities that are doing extensive conservation. To look at it, that's, so that's usage per day, per unit. To look at it on how much a typical home gets, uses per month, in this example I gave here, customer two is using 8 CCF. That's over like a two-month billing period. That's about as low as we would probably see it go. When we do rate studies, we typically look at four to five CCF per month as a lower floor in the western part of the Cascades. So I don't know if that kind of gets at your question there.
I think so.
Okay. All right.
Other questions right now, before we move on? All right.
Okay. So that is conservation. Main focus of the discussion tonight is to look at supply options moving into the future. To begin this, I want to provide a summary of how different parts of the city are provided water, where different parts get water from. Talk about the, the identified future deficiency in water supply to the areas of the city that are currently served by groundwater. Again, we've talked about this before, but we want to dive into more detail tonight, and then look at the options that you have in front of you to resolve that deficiency. So first, in this map, we are showing the different portions of, of the city and where they receive their water supply from. So I'm going to start with the green area in the valley and up Squawk Mountain and very kind of northeastern portion of Cougar Mountain, Cougar Ridge. Everything in green is currently receiving groundwater from your own groundwater wells. The areas in blue, South Cove, Lakemont, Montreux, are receiving regional supply from Cascade. To the east, the Highlands and Grand Ridge currently are receiving regional supply, but we've colored them differently to denote, to denote the fact that they can also receive groundwater. From an infrastructure perspective, groundwater can make its way into the Highlands, it just isn't right now. And then a reminder that this portion up here is served by San Amish Plateau water. Okay? So geographically, you can kind of see in the central portion, groundwater, to the east and to the west, regional supply. Okay? To look at this, this is from a map, kind of a, you know, plan-view perspective. I'm going to get a little bit engineering on you, but not too much. To view it from a, more of a pressure perspective and how we move water throughout the system, we can look at it this way. I'm going to start from the bottom, so again, your wells, we're pumping groundwater up out of the wells into the valley zone. Right? But then from the valley, we can move that water, we pump it up Squawk Mountain, we pump it up to Talis, and we pump it up to Cougar Ridge. The dash green line there, again, is reflecting the fact that the city has the physical capability of moving groundwater up into the Highlands, but currently is not. Up at the top, the blue, the regional Cascade water supply, it's coming into South Cove, coming into Lakemont, coming into Issaquah, we show, to the Highlands and Grand Ridge. We show the dash blue line, which indicates that regional Cascade supply can go into Talis. In fact, it has, even up fairly recently, when the landslide made it impossible to send groundwater there, but it's not currently going there right now. Talis is on 100% groundwater right now. So I mention this because this also reflects what you have to do to move water around in the system. Okay? Meaning to get water from the valley, Squawk Mountain, to Talis, to Cougar Ridge, requires pumping and storage. So that's just a real quick lay of the land, all right, for the different areas of the city. Want to talk a little bit about how the system has been developed over time from a perspective of supply resiliency and redundancy. Talked about a little, a little bit about this last time. I mentioned last time that from the state's perspective, state law is, that your supply capacity has to be able to support your maximum day demand. You can't rely on other things, such as storage, to meet maximum day demand. However, that's not to discount the importance and the significance of storage from an emergency and a reliability perspective. Last time, the question was posed, how much storage do we have? And we couldn't quickly answer that on the fly. So here's the answer, 13.8 million gallons total storage in the system. To give you some perspective on that, or reference point, if your average day demand is currently, let's say, just round it to 2.5 million gallons per day, okay, that would equate then to about five and a half days of average day demand that you have sitting up in storage. Okay? But just to clarify, to clarify that, again, that can't be used to meet maximum day demand, but it is there. It's an important part of your system reliability. It's important to note that over the decades, resiliency has been explicitly built into the water system, things such as supply redundancy, having that Cascade regional supply as well as your own local groundwater supply. You have storage redundancy within your various operating areas, meaning in each area, you have two tanks. So if one tank needs to go down for maintenance, or there's a problem, there's another tank that's right there. Not all systems have that kind of dual storage redundancy. And then seismic improvements. You know, over the years, you've been girding yourself for the Cascadia-type of event through seismic improvements at the reservoirs. So just a quick snapshot on what the city has done over time with respect to reliability. Now, let's move to a chart that is very similar to the one that I've provided before, where now we're going to focus on just those portions of the city that receive groundwater only currently. We're going to compare the demand forecast for those areas against your groundwater supply capacity. This chart's very similar, but different color scheme for a particular reason. Again, the horizontal red line at 4 MGD, that's your current well capacity. Okay? Your total supply capacity for those areas that receive groundwater. The bar chart is the demands in those areas. The different colors relate to those different operating areas that receive groundwater. So once again, the green is for the valley zone, the low valley zone, the blue, Squawk Mountain, and then that other color of green is Talis. One thing I want to point out, these demands are all predicated on that lower demand curve. So they assume conservation is continuing and that you see those gains. If you did not see those conservation gains, that's reflected in the very top portion of each of these bars, these gray areas. That would be the additional demand if you didn't achieve conservation. So bottom line message in this chart, we've, we've talked about it before, that in, in the areas that are receiving groundwater, we are projecting that you could potentially meet capacity as early as 2021. Now, continued conservation gets you a year, okay, into 2022. And if we also then assume that this color, this kind of yellowish-green, that's Talis, if Talis were to be converted to regional supply, they've seen regional water before, that moves that deficiency out to 2027. So we've seen similar charts before, but now we've kind of, we're showing you the color scheme for the various portions of those areas. So the issue, running out of groundwater supply to meet those areas that currently see groundwater. Now regardless of the timeline, what are the options that you have to resolve that deficiency? There are really three main options. Option one is to continue to utilize your groundwater wells to the full extent that you can, and eventually blend regional supply with that groundwater to serve all the area that currently sees only groundwater. Option two is to cease using your groundwater wells and convert the entire city to regional supply. Option three is to try to systematically reduce the area that is served by groundwater and shift some areas to regional supply in an effort to try to maintain some portions of the city that would stay only on groundwater. Does that make sense? I'm going to go into each of these in more detail, but before I do, I just wanted to pause real quickly. So again, option one, for each of these, a quick description and then some pros and cons. So option one, again, is an introduction of regional supply into portions of the city that have not previously used it. So the valley and Squawk Mountain and Cougar Ridge. To do this, you would have to modify the treatment that you currently do at your groundwater wells to affect the blend of that water safely. Okay? So advantages for that option. The end result would be a provision of uniform treatment and water quality throughout the system, so you wouldn't have these different service areas that are receiving different types of water. At the same time, it keeps your water purchase costs to a minimum because you're retaining your, your groundwater wells. Okay? So you're going to have to buy more regional water, but you're continuing to use your groundwater wells. And lastly, you're retaining those groundwater wells as a local source for overall supply reliability.
Can't we dig more wells?
To do more, to, to implement more wells would require more water rights, which although it's not completely impossible within Western Washington, it essentially is impossible because we are in a water right limited basin, and you have to get those from the State Department of Ecology, a huge process to go through, and essentially all but impossible to, to do that here in this basin.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, Councilmember Ramos.
Follow-up on that. So buying water, no one's ever talked about that supply. It seems like it's always talked about, like it's an unlimited supply that's just always going to take care of all our needs. At some point, you know, that, I assume, has some limit as well. So what's, what's that? Because, I mean, like, I've seen other places where you, if you can't buy more water, you have to stop growth or something of that nature because you can't provide the water. Right now, we're acting like we have an unlimited supply, we can do whatever because we're getting it from a regional source. How does that lay into that?
So from a contractual perspective, and from your perspective, that supply is unlimited because Cascade is bound to meeting all of your needs into the future. So from a contractual relationship, it in, in essence, is unlimited. Physical reality, sure, the supplies that Cascade is utilizing, purchasing water from SPU currently, there are limits there, but Cascade has a whole set of plans for additional supplies in the future, right? Lake taps, you know, additional conservation. And so I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but they're significantly greater than what the level of demand that's exerted by Cascade members right now is. So though not unlimited, a vastly different picture than what we're depicting here for this limitation in your currently groundwater-fed areas. Does that answer the question? Okay. So I've hit the advantages. The disadvantage of this option is that it does represent new water quality being introduced to portions of the city that have not previously received regional water supply from Cascade.
Several questions. I'm going to go with Councilmember Goodman first.
I was just going to ask you to clarify what you mean by new water quality. I think, I think maybe you mean a different water.
Right. So, so your existing groundwater supply coming from groundwater wells, the regional supply is surface water, and as a part of that surface water treatment, that water is fluoridated. Your groundwater supply is not. This is one key distinction between the two. There are other water quality differences in terms of pH and other water chemistry differences, which would have to be mitigated through treatment. That's what requires that additional level of treatment. But to introduce that water into areas that have not seen that water previously, one of the, one of the fundamental differences would be the presence of fluoride in that water.
Councilmember Hunt?
I am, it gives me pause that it's a con that we might have different water quality parameters under this, because I think there are benefits to having water quality that would be different. So I don't, I don't agree that that's necessarily a con.
And I think that's a big point of discussion, you know, partially for tonight, but then also in our next meeting, when we're talking about specifically water quality and treatment levels of service. We want to pose that question and have that dialogue then. We raise it as a con here, you're right, perhaps that's not the best term, but it's a recognition that it is a fundamental change for some portions of the city.
Okay. I had a related, a related question, which was, we are talking now about the supply, and then we're going to be talking at a next work session about treatment. There are some, to me, the solutions could involve different combinations of those two things. And so I wondered also if you could talk a little bit to that, because if we treat them completely separate, they won't be implemented completely separately. We'll have supply, and then we'll have a treatment question next.
Right. And again, that's, I think the bigger conversation frankly will come at the next session. This is really the setup to understand, this is the water quantity part of the discussion. Where can water come from? What are those options? And then the water quality component will come next time. They are very much interrelated. I think the purpose of tonight really is to advise you on the different options that are, that exist from a water quantity and source of supply, and make sure everybody understands that kind of bottom-line playing field, and then next time, we'll dive into the water quality piece of it.
Let me ask sort of a weird question. So you said that we are in a water, I can't remember the term you used, basin, but the water-constrained.
Limited, in terms of new water rights. Yeah.
Are there options that, I mean, if, at some point, we're going to discuss the economic model on this in addition to the, in addition to the water quality and some of these other issues like fluoridation. If, you know, if Cascade water costs us 10 times as much as, as well water, you know, we would look at sort of solutions for their field, right?
Right.
Like, like you could build a pipe and go from someplace else, right? Someplace that has more water. Right? Is that, are those things, is anybody doing that? Is anybody looking outside the basin for their solutions to water motivated by more of the economic model and, and how much it costs? Because I'm not on Cascade water, but I believe it's a bit more expensive than our water.
It is. And so you won't see cost numbers in this presentation tonight, although I am prepared to speak from a really high level to, to the differences between a couple of these options. Yes, I mean, currently, the cost to purchase Cascade water is approximately six times the cost that it takes you to produce water from your wells. It's a very rough number. Okay? But that's just to give you a sense of the, the difference there. And to also give you an overall sense of magnitude of costs for these options, again, these are very rough numbers, and that's why you haven't seen them in the presentation. This option one, this is discussed a lot in the water system plan, because this would require modifications to your treatment approach. And in the water system plan, there's a capital improvement related to that treatment, upgraded treatment, and that price tag is right around 24 million, okay, for a capital investment in that. If we look at what that total cost of operating your wells over a 20-year period is, I do that to compare it with the Cascade costs, which is an annual purchase cost, the total cost over the space of 20 years for using your wells on the order of 30 million.
In order of what?
$30 million. If you were to, to go, go through this option one of that modified treatment, and then there's ongoing operational costs with using your wells. ongoing operational costs with using your wells, total cost of about 30. To replace that, and this is where I'm heading next with option two, is to go all regional, right? To replace that groundwater supply with Cascade water, that Cascade purchase cost would be on the order of $1.7, $1.8 million per year for that volume of water that you're letting go from your groundwater. If you multiply that over 20 years, and I'm not doing present value analysis on this, but just a straight ahead, real cost analysis, you know, that's on the order of 35 million. So what you start to see is, and I'm not trying to paint the picture one way or the other, but actually illustrating that those costs between those two options somewhat similar. And based on what I just said there, maybe this one comes out a little bit less than the regional one, but that gives you a sense of the trade-off.
Why have Cascade water cost six times as much as well water? Why isn't there a bigger price difference?
Why isn't there a big?
Bigger price difference?
Because of that, it's this capital investment need to modify and upgrade treatment, to blend the supplies.
Ah, yes, okay, yep.
It's not just the annual cost, it's that upfront capital that kind of balances that up.
When we do this next time, I'm sorry, I'm keeping other people from asking questions, will we see these economic models?
If you, if you want to get into that, we certainly can. We haven't fully delved into how that discussion will be laid out.
I think we would have to in that next conversation, and I see some head nods.
I was just going to say, I think we have to. I don't know how you could pick an option without considering the financial implications, so that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions right now? We go on? Nope?
Okay. So that is option one. Already started talking about option two, which again is, you know, what this option would involve is the transfer of your wells to Cascade. Okay, so there would be a transaction there, relinquishing local control of the wells, and it would be now delivery 100% of regional supply to your entire service area. Pros, you know, there would be a consistent water supply and water quality throughout the city. Again, one could say, is that an advantage or a disadvantage? We're saying advantage here in the sense of being able to operate a system. It's simpler if it's, you know, one type of water perhaps. And the other advantage of this option is that it does eliminate the O&M costs associated with the wells. On the downside, the city would be losing local control over that source that you currently have. Your water purchase cost would increase, as I just touched on real roughly a moment ago, and of course, you would have lower overall source reliability. You, as a local water purveyor, would have a lack of redundancy.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So, transfer wells to CWI, I'm looking at Sheldon. I mean, not that you have to answer it, somebody can probably answer it, but has, is this a real possibility with Cascade water? Or is this our idea that this could, we might be able to transfer? Are they really, would they really be interested in that?
I will let Sheldon or Bob speak to that. I will answer first by saying it is a possibility, and there have been some very, very preliminary discussions just to vet that possibility. But do you want to speak more to that?
Thank you, Jeff. As Jeff mentioned, there's been some preliminary look-sees with Cascade as far as would they be interested or not. Part of what they've said is that they'd be willing to look at it, but nothing further has come of it. It is an option, and the way that they would see it is that, yes, they would probably, from their staff perspective, because no discussion has happened at the board about this at all, is that the likelihood would be is that if we wanted to go this route, they would recommend at the staff to having a conversation of us giving up the water from our wells, because otherwise, there would be an additional capital cost that the city would have to bear to retain its wells and then get the water supply from Cascade in its entirety. Gets into a little more detail on the financing model that Cascade uses, but it's all about how much capacity we have that we have on our own versus how much we're going to expect from Cascade. And there's a cost associated with it, if you're familiar with the RCFCs. I can't remember how many RCFCs the supply is worth at 4 million gallons a day, but quite a bit, and so you multiply those out to, you know, $6,000 a pop, and you're in the millions of dollars very quickly. And so, that's the trade-off. RCFCs and millions of dollars plus the annual operating costs. It starts to work out a little bit more in the financials that you were talking about earlier, that if you don't give up your wells to Cascade, your revenue, or I shouldn't say your revenue, but your cost to buy the Cascade water is going to be substantially more than what Jeff mentioned.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to know if, how far we were, and because it really would be a nod that, yes, the council would be interested in this potential option. Thanks.
Councilmember Hunt?
On the previous slide, there was the con, which I spoke about having to do with the, what I would call different water quality. This would also have that different water quality for parts of the city, but it's not mentioned as a con. And again, I don't necessarily agree that it's a con, but I just wanted to point that out. And then also, in both, the pro is that there's consistent water quality throughout the city in both this and the previous one. So, do you, could you elaborate a little bit about what that, what the differences would be for that? There's consistent water quality for both, but in this case, it's all regional, and what does that mean for our water quality?
Right. So, what we're speaking to here is that in the prior situation where we are now blending groundwater and surface, we're needing to modify the treatment of your current groundwater quality to better match and assimilate the regional supply so that we affect a safe, you know, delivery of water. It's not aggressive with the pipes that have only seen groundwater in the past. And then there's the fluoride, there's the fluoride question. And so, the point is that it wouldn't be the exact same quality of water here. This is 100% regional supply, right? Whereas in option one, it is a blend of groundwater and regional, but on some key parameters such as fluoride and pH, it would be consistent water throughout.
Okay. And I also just have a comment, which is, with these cons, and Council President Marks mentioned this, it's hard for me to know how serious these, especially the cost increase, how serious that is relative to the other options, so that would be good to know.
And we can dig into that. As Sheldon pointed out, one of the challenges is, without having taken that much further with Cascade, there are uncertainties in what that cost would be. But we can capture that, we can capture a range of that for the next discussion.
Councilmember, Deputy Council President Patisis?
Just to follow up on that question, are there any representative examples, other cities, that have gone through something similar?
Specifically with Cascade? Not in recent, not, I'm trying to think, right after the formation of Cascade, if there was some.
No, there weren't any that I'm aware of. The closest that I can speak to on this is the City of Redmond had a couple of its wells down for complete replacement and rehabilitation for about a year or two, and Cascade waived the RCFC connection because they realized it was on a temporary basis, but in this case, we're looking at a permanent basis. So, that's the only situation I'm aware of dealing with Cascade where a member's independent supply went down for a period of time.
Thank you.
To Councilmember Hunt's point, you know, I think one of the things we're going to need to talk about next time is maybe thinking not in terms, well, you still have cons, but, you know, risk. What are some of the risks associated? If you give a number that is, you know, a predictor of how things might work out with Cascade water in a particular option, flag that risk, right? Flag, you know, we might have, if you have two options, and one costs us $25 million and the other costs us $24 million, but the $24 million dollar option has a substantial risk of a larger cost in it, then we might want to choose the $25 million option as, for risk mitigation, right? So that, that part of how we discuss risk is going to be important in that conversation next time as well.
Okay.
Other questions right now?
We've introduced a third option, which has not been explored in great detail for reasons that I'll get into, but as mentioned previously, the description of this is to modify your distribution system to, I'm going to say carve out or maintain a smaller portion of the city that would continue to only be served by groundwater. And so as to make that happen, that would require a lot more investment in infrastructure within the city to fully separate where regional water is going than it would be under the prior two options, okay? Advantage of this is, again, you're keeping purchase water cost to a minimum, and if this is a policy concern or a decision or a direction of council to try to keep a portion of the city only receiving groundwater, this option could see that happen. The disadvantage is what I just mentioned, that it requires potentially significant amount of new additional piping and storage facilities to maintain that separation. For example, what we mean by that is, all of the groundwater that makes its way up to Squawk Mountain or to Cougar Ridge also can see the valley zone, okay? And portions of Squawk Mountain and Cougar Ridge rely on storage in the valley zone for fire suppression, emergencies, et cetera. So if, for example, the city wanted to try to retain Squawk Mountain as only groundwater-fed, well, there would have to be new piping that would be directly going from the wells up to Squawk Mountain. There would have to be new storage facilities to keep that groundwater separate from blended water that would be in the valley zone. So we haven't gone into detail about lining those out and lining those costs out, but just wanted to illustrate some of the infrastructure complexities with implementing that particular option.
Don't we have huge storage on Squawk? And I say that as someone who has two large reservoirs directly above my house.
You do, you do. But again, this gets to, part of the reason why there are two tanks there is that relied, that redundancy factor, and that it's not satisfying all of the storage needs for Squawk Mountain.
Many of those dual reservoir systems on Squawk.
Right.
I mean, fourth rim has its own, my neighborhood has one.
And that has to do, again, with the pressures of the hydraulics of that.
Yeah, we have 1,400 feet of.
Of head, of lift, yeah, exactly. So, that is correct. There's a lot of storage up there, but for emergency and fire purposes, the system requires storage from the valley zone. So, I wasn't going to go into too much more detail on that here. What I was going to say then is, when we go back to the draft Water System Plan, so in summary, I'm going to scroll right on and down to the recommendation. The recommendation that is set forth in the Water System Plan currently is moving forward with option one. This is what we want to have further dialogue on, especially next time, when we understand the treatment implications, water quality levels of service implications, et cetera. But again, the rationale behind that current recommendation in the draft plan are what is stated there, and that is the fact that the city would retain local control of those sources, you maintain supply reliability, you have consistent water quality throughout the system, and by keeping the groundwater supply on, you're minimizing future water purchase costs.
Questions, thoughts? So I'll say something that when we talk about this next time, you know, I am skeptical about options that would have, that would give up control of our wells for a couple of reasons. One is that although we are relatively flush, so to speak, with water in Western Washington, it seems like an extremely valuable resource that we have, that, you know, careful about what resources we ever think about, seems like it'd be easy to get into a penny wise, pound foolish situation. And the other is, and I say this knowing nothing about the politics of CWA, the ability to negotiate where we're at with an entity rather than being entirely beholden to them seems like a very different set of conversations that you have with somebody. And again, I don't mean any offense to Cascade Water, I'm just saying, in any situation, when somebody, so to speak, has you over a barrel, you know, that's not a great position to be in. But, you know, I'm open to hearing about more about the other options next time. Councilmember Ray?
So, I don't think we, I would not be comfortable moving forward with any option until we can see what the details of the financials look like, because there's a lot of cost in here, and there's a lot of benefits. And I'm not really super excited about giving our wells to Cascade water, but as Council President Marks pointed out, it is a very valuable resource, and it would come with, I would suspect, a commensurate, very valuable remuneration to the city if we were to do that. So, there's two things that are really important to me. One is that we understand all of the cost and where there are risks, thank you, and also that we understand the implication to our consumers of water and what it will do to their rates if we go one way or the other way or the other way, because I think that is as important as how much are we going to invest in it.
Other interim thoughts? Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, I totally agree with everything that Councilmember Ray just said. Those are all just things we need definitely to start working towards decision. What you didn't state was, right now, it says the recommendation is leaning towards option one. So, I am just assuming that that is what's coming from staff work or whatever, that that's the way the administration and staff is saying they think that might be the best option, right?
Correct.
I just want to verify that assumption.
Right.
Okay. And then, but like I say, if we're going to get to decision-making time, there's a whole lot more information needed, for sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. This is a big topic. It takes several meetings for us to digest and understand. There is a, we talk a lot about community engagement, and I would imagine that a lot of people have opinions about this, and I wonder what the plan is to have some sort of a community engagement, knowing the difficulty in that, because it's a huge topic. We can't have, probably have a series of meetings like this, but I just wanted to know if we do have a plan, because, you know, what would happen is we make a decision and we'll, why'd you do that? You never asked us what we thought. So, just wondering what you all have talked about.
There have been some discussions early on, but I would defer to Bob and Sheldon on if there's a current plan.
It's a really fair question. I think, as you suggested, we wanted to make sure that we had sufficient time to lay out this topic, and I think there will be subsequent public engagement. We haven't had a lot of conversation yet about what that would look like. In part, these discussions will help us to understand how to frame the issue for the general public and get a sense of what the key questions are and what the council's priorities might be and desires for that outreach. So I think we could come back to you with a plan for that outreach. I think we'd want to time that at a moment in time when we've had enough dialogue to make sure that we're providing an accurate and comprehensive picture for the public.
Thanks, and it sounds to me like there is going to be more talk about it in the plan somehow?
Yeah, I think so. We'll have to huddle up after this meeting and talk about exactly what we want to present at the next work session. I think we have all anticipated that a sizable majority of the commentary that we will expect on this topic will come with the topic that's laid out in work session number three, but as we've suggested tonight, all of it's interrelated. So, let us huddle up, let us come back to you at the next meeting with the plan. We'll relay that at the next meeting, but also go through the content on that third topic.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, I just want to tie this back to our previous agenda item, which is strategic plan. We were talking about infrastructure, core infrastructure, and this is one of our core duties as a city, is to provide water to our citizens, and this fits under infrastructure. And this is something that's not super attractive to, we don't have hundreds of people from the public coming in to talk about the details of the water supply, yet it is absolutely core to the quality of life, for sure. And so, I think this is a real critical issue in how we get that word out, because it is important, and fluoridation and. is important, and fluoridation, and all these different things that we end up putting in the water or not, and treatments and so forth, and it is our core duty.
Right.
It's in the core infrastructure. So the next three to five years, one of the reasons why it fits differently in that strategic plan, just going to bring that one back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
I think all three of these supplies, as far as I under, all three of these supply options, as far as I understand, they will represent different water quality to some parts of the city, and so I think, for me, this is, this, I can't differentiate it from the next conversation, which has to do with the water treatment, and I think we also have incomplete information about the financial implications, and so I'm, as I think I've been hearing from my fellow council members, I'm not comfortable with supporting any of the options at this time when we don't have a complete picture.
Deputy Council President Batiste?
I would just say, not to repeat, but just to echo what some of my fellow council members have talked about, I just think getting a better picture of the cost and the risks associated will let us move down the road toward decisions.
So, I'll add to that, because I mean, clearly, you're not asking for us to.
No.
Make a decision tonight, but it's good to understand what the recommendation is. One thing about the next meeting that I think we should be really clear on, you know, the 5-10 elephant in the room is fluoridation and chlorination, and we're going to get into that next time. It's going to be important, I think, to have best science presented, and that's not in any way to be antagonistic towards any opinions in the community, but I think that this is one of those areas where you have to practice reality-based governance. And so, when we go to talk about this, again, not to be argumentative with anybody, but we'll need to see, I mean, we're going to hear from people that have concerns, right?
Sure.
And we're going to need to understand what science says about those concerns. And I'll want to hear that, even if that is potentially, you know, there are people who could view that as argumentative, and that's unfortunate, but we'll need to make a decision based on what's, you know, based on science and economics, and how we see the best benefit for the community as a whole.
Right. Very good. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. That's all we had for tonight.
All you have?
Again, it was. This was just a stepping stone.
Any other questions for them before we go? And I'll put it again to the public, if anybody in the public wants to speak to this issue.
Water quality, it kind of drives me nuts, because quality is, what we're talking about is chemistry in some cases, that the two chem, because of what it does to pipes and that kind of thing. In other cases, we're talking about good water, air water that might make you sick, or might, you know, so I would like to see chemistry sometimes, we're talking about water chemistry, and then water quality, but they're two, to me, different things. Irrigation's the big one, and that's where the water goes. I mean, that's what we're, you know, we have to build these huge systems for fires, but we need lots more water for irrigation. Climate change could influence that. And down the pike, at some point, we have to get a bigger supply. It could be Lake Taps, which is an unbelievably expensive source of water. And anything we do to bring up the Lake Taps supply sooner is, means future costs. Now, maybe there's some other supplies, and maybe Lake Taps will go to Tacoma, and we'll make some good deals out there and get, not have to drink Lake Taps. But eight and a half years ago, my last meeting with Cascade Water Alliance, I said, "I hope I never have to drink Lake Taps in my lifetime," and I plan to be around for a while yet. So, please don't do anything to bring that day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And with that, we will move on to our third item, third and final item for this evening, which is ID 0295, permitted land uses, Table 4.3B, Central Izequod Development and Design Standards, with our own ubiquitous and patient Director of Economic and Developmental Services, Keith Miller.
Good evening, council members. So, we're here to talk about Table 4.3B again, in a really small way. So, there was, so you asked for a memo, and a glimpse, kind of behind the curtain, to see what it might look like, and so this is what we provided for you this evening. I'll give you a quick overview of the table, and then ask you if you have questions. So, you can see the, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth column is completely deleted from the table. The sixth column used to be Destination Retail, and as part of adopting the visions for Central Izequod, we moved that entire area outside of Central Izequod. So, as it relates to the land use table, obviously, it no longer exists. One of the questions that came up is, we started to strike things, as you can see from the first row, botanical gardens, the question was, well, if you strike it completely out of Central Izequod, if you wanted to do botanical gardens in the city, where could you do that? So, we added this last column, which identifies which zones do allow those uses which you could see might be completely struck out of Central Izequod. So, obviously, this had no public outreach, this was just letting you guys get a glimpse of what this could look like, if you wanted us to move forward with doing this exercise. Yes, sir?
It's, I'm confused. So, you don't actually mean to strike the phrase botanical gardens arboretum, even though you have it struck? You would leave that phrase in, you would take out the zoned districts, you would, they would all be blank except for the last one?
Yes, all the Ps would leave.
But the actual thing that shows that the whole phrase on the left goes away, that's not, you would do it? There would actually be a line that says botanical gardens arboretum?
Well, since it's, since it's not allowed in its entirety, you could take the whole row out.
What's the point of having the thing at the end that you don't have taken out?
Because you would, if you were looking to put botanical gardens in Central, you'd see that it was not allowed, it was not listed, and therefore, it would only be listed in the IMC under these zones. So, you could do it either way. You could either leave it and have no Ps, or you could take it out completely.
I don't get how.
So, the only reason, the only reason you would leave it is to recognize that.
That it's not allowed in.
That it used to be allowed. There's a number of other land uses that are allowed in the IMC that are not in Central, so they don't even show up in Table 4.3B at all. No rows.
I don't get how you leave the last column in.
Well, the last column is actually not part of Table 4.3B. We added it, we added this column just to help you all understand if it was.
It's just a council cheat.
Yes. This was a, it's kind of like the teacher's edition.
Ah, where the solutions are included.
In the margin, yes. Exactly. So, the table actually ends at intensive commercial, as it's listed in Central Izequod Development and Design Standards. So, we went through this as a group, and we identified, you know, so if you want to kind of scroll through and see some things where we've scratched uses, generally speaking, it relates to things that we felt did not add to the expected vibrancy of Central Izequod, so things like, you know, we got into a kennel. So kennel, as it's defined as a land use, is, allows for overnight boarding of dogs, and that's different than, say, like, a pet store that might allow it on occasion, you know, over a weekend or something. So this is long-term boarding of animals, which doesn't really add to the vibrancy of your street life. So, so again, this was staff's, the administration's first run at some thoughts for this, and I think what would come out of this conversation this evening, if you felt there was enough merit to adjusting this table, we would then come back with an agenda bill, and that would then run through the, part of, if you look at the last sentence of the memorandum at the beginning, what we anticipated was basically taking this through, because it'd be a code amendment, it would have to go through Planning Policy Commission, so we anticipated at least two Planning Policy Commission meetings, and then it would go through Land and Shore Committee as a final discussion before the full council would take action on it. So, so if that is, so I guess there's two parts of this conversation. One is, do you want us to move forward with this? And two, does the scope of work seem to jive with what you were anticipating for this work item? With that, I'm going to stop talking.
Councilmember Goodman?
Since I initially raised it, I want to say, yes, it's about what I expected, and the level of effort that you put in so far to show us what you initially found is about what I expected, so thank you. I do think it's a valuable exercise, just to see that we have one entire column that's no longer needed. I will say that it seems to me that this should be just an administrative decision that we're going to do it, just because otherwise it's super sloppy, and there's obviously some cleanup that needs to be done, whatever those details end up to be after going through PPC. I think it's something that needs to be done. I don't know that it's an emergency, and it has to be done by, you know, August, you know, October 1st or anything, but I, I do think that it's something that needs to be done.
My eye is drawn somehow to the adult entertainment facilities line item under industrial intensive commercial, and I just want to ask the question that, let me ask this question carefully. Is there any, in the law of unintended consequences, is there any chance that taking action on this, what we have in front of us, would in any way change the city's longstanding? You are zoning on adult entertainment facilities.
So, so one of the values of the last column, the cheat sheet column, is seeing where those are allowed. The reason, so, oh, I was on agriculture. Oh, okay, so.
All about note 18, I think.
Yeah, so if you want to go down to footnote 18, we can do that. Footnote 18 says, "No adult entertainment facility shall be permitted to locate in any zone, including the icy zone, within the territory of North Izequod Annexation Area, as described in general, this applies north of northeast Locust." North of northeast Locust. Wow, that seems like two-thirds of the city. Okay, so, so part of this is, you know, we would need to go through these and kind of scrutinize them a little bit more in detail. I think, I got to find that one again. There it is. So.
The reason I ask is, the city has sort of a longstanding policy on how it zoned, would potentially zone this sort of business, and I want to make sure, again, this law of unintended consequences, that as we codify things, that we don't break anything.
Right.
With regard to this.
So, so, you know, I think this one, so here's a good example, where I think this particular one would be of value to have a more deliberate conversation. So, as we amended the boundaries of Central Izequod, the only icy zones that are left, I'll go to the map at the end, and it's a little hard to see, but these are the only icy zones that are left. And where it is, it's basically Carlson Kennels, and it's the boat dealership on East Lakes of Mamish, and I think we could have a conversation about would either of those places be the right location for an adult entertainment facility? And so, because now we're down to, like, two properties, and so I think you could potentially have a conversation about should that be allowed in Central Izequod at all, since that's the only location where it could go. But that's a conversation we could have in another venue.
Councilmember Ray, you look eager to discuss.
Because I, it just led me into my next, my question, which was, I noticed there's some P0s, and there's some P3s, and there's some P2s, and I'm guessing there's a P1, I just didn't find it. So what's, what's the significance of that over just a P?
It's the, it's the level of review. So like a, like a two, a one is administrative, and a two and three go to Development Commission. So, and because of the sensitive, the topical sensitivity, I think we, that's why this one's a two.
Makes sense, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions?
The siren goes by.
Councilmember Hunt?
What does the rest of this process look like? I know there's a lot of different specifics that we could get into, but I imagine that this will go to Planning Policy, then they'll bring it back, and then we have a discussion about what amendments we as council would want to make to the work that comes from staff and the Planning Policy Commission.
Yes, so typically, as, as you know, the way this would unfold would be, there'd be a recommendation from PPC. It would go to committee for a conversation. Ultimately, there would be a recommendation coming out of committee, and whether or not there is a lot of, you know, my guess is, there'll be at least a handful of these that will probably be debatable, you know, ones that we'll spend more time talking about than others, and I would guess that most of the conversation that we have at full council will be about those few that end up in that small band of, well, what about this one? And how does that really work? And at the end of the day, I think you guys would adopt an amended 4.3B that would be in Central.
Other questions right now? Councilmember Hunt?
I have a lot of thoughts on a lot of them, but I'm just going to make one, which is that I think the, I think for consideration, the first one, which is botanical gardens, I worked for a botanical garden in a very urban setting, and I think it did really increase pedestrian. It was a very pedestrian-oriented use, and I think it very much contributes to vibrancy and a number of other community values that we want, so I would, that would be the one that I would, would point out as something that I would question, but I won't get into the other ones.
Okay. Write myself a note.
Deputy Council President Batiste?
So, I don't have anything specific right now, but I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank Council, Councilmember Goodman for bringing this forward. I think it's really important to look at, and I'll look forward to, as we move through, what kinds of recommendations come about.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I, what are you looking for us? What's our charge tonight? So, I was just refreshing my memory on exact motions that were made, and perhaps you can help me with that, since I'm on the wrong time zone still. I think at our last meeting, on the June 18th meeting, we took the passage of that motion, which was postponed until that meeting, to mean, do the work that has been done by staff. This next step is a subsequent effort, and that's where I think we need to be cognizant of what additional we can take on, and still compete, complete the items that were on the 2018 work plan. Keith has estimated 20 to 30 hours of staff time, that's from this moment forward. I got to guess we've spent collectively about 50 hours, if not more, on this so far, as SLT and also DSD and ED staff. So this additional 20 to 30, I'll go with the department director's estimate on that. But that does displace, I think, some work that we were planning to do on the sign code, potentially. So, we want to be upfront about that, and we'll need to continue to kind of talk about what we can manage and achieve this year. I think we also talked, Councilmember Hunt had some questions about potentially other projects that we could trade off instead of sign code. So tonight, if, if there are head nods in the direction of, we think this is important to do this work in 2018, staff is comfortable with that, we can proceed without formal direction, formal vote from council, but I would ask for that same sort of head nod against.
But I would ask for that same sort of head nod acknowledgement that we'll need to continue to monitor our ability to get those other things done on the work plan.
Councilmember Goodman, do you want to lead that?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's important. And I, I will only say that, and this will probably, I just would expect the work, this to be done as part of our responsibilities, that, that it needs to come, that it needs to come out of council or that we need to sort of direct the administration to do it. I just think, I understand the time, I mean, I understand that you can only do so much. But I just, this is the kind of stuff that I just would expect to be done when we do a ginormous amendment to the Central Isiqua plan. This is the kind of cleanup that has to be done. I do think it has to be done. Like I said, I don't think it's an emergency, but I, I do think we should get it done this year.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Hunt?
I, I agree. I think it's, it's important. And my understanding regarding the sign code, which is still the administration's preferred option for what gets shuffled around, is that it, the sign code update is not a urgent pressing need. And so it can be delayed without serious consequences. And so I, I am in support of looking at this. I think it's important.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Goodman. I'm glad she brought this forward. And we're, doing this is something we just have to do because of the previous things. It just has to follow suit and must be done. I, having played with sign code before with, with you, that's a really difficult thing and takes a lot of time and effort. I know how much that takes. But, but I think we need to do this in our, the way those, I think we need to sneak it in here as quickly as we can because it's part of what we already did. So it needs, I think, follow suit as quickly as we can and then jump on, back onto that sign code. Because the sign code, I don't want to, that's critical. It is critical to every business that opens here. It's critical to a whole lot of people and their livelihood. So I don't want to let that, just because of sign code, be something that isn't important. It is critical. And I've watched a number of businesses struggle through our sign code difficulties already. So I don't want to lose that, that that's not important. And we're, I think, a couple of years behind trying to get that done, what we originally wanted to do as well. So I just want to keep that on the forefront as well. But this is, this is continuing what we started and we have to finish that.
So I'll say, I'm supportive of doing this as well. I think we should look really hard at the thing I asked about unintended consequences and look at some of our zoning in, and make sure that we're not, like I said, that we're not going to create unintended consequences. Anybody else? Councilmember Ray? Nope? All right. That's it. Do you have the feedback you were--
Great.
For what you were hoping?
Yes. We'll keep council apprised of our progress.
All right. Well, my laptop may or may not be working at this point, but I believe that that was it. I believe that was, we only had three things this evening. Oh, sorry, I will ask if any members of the public wish to speak to us on this matter?
Just don't pick on botanical gardens, okay?
There's a comment for two votes for botanical gardens.
Is a quality really cool.
So for those of you at home, the comment was, don't pick on botanical gardens. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.